My name is Lynn Turner and I am, well, many of you may know me, but I'm also the new chapter chair for the Graduate Center chapter and with the Fight Back Fridays Working Group. And over here again to welcome you to the People's Board of Trustees' hearing. According to New York State education law, the Board of Trustees', this is from the Board of Trustees' website, in case you haven't seen it, the Board of Trustees shall hold at least one public hearing each year in the five boroughs of the city of New York. The purpose of such hearings shall be to receive testimony and statements from concerned individuals about university issues. And since we've been through this many times before, these hearings are typically held in person a week before the Board of Trustees' meetings. However, the Board of Trustees have not been holding in-person public hearings due to coronavirus concerns. This is, of course, necessary and welcome. However, given that institutions and organizations of all sorts, including public higher education, have learned to become adept with online forums, events, and meetings of all sorts. And amidst existential threat to CUNY, the People's Public University System for New York communities now facing looming budget cuts, non-reappointments, and layoffs, proposed tuition hikes, and critical concerns regarding reopening and health and safety, it's somewhat astonishing and distressing that the CUNY Board of Trustees has not converted its borough hearings to a virtual format. However, they did not do so, so we are doing so. Welcome again to the PSC's CUNY Board of Trustees' Hearing for the People. The format of our Board of Trustees' hearing today is that I will, in fact, I will call names for each person to testify. Each person has two minutes. Please keep to time. And Robert Farrell will be our illustrious timekeeper. Many of you have registered to testify and others will be our audience. For those that are testifying, given some time constraints, everyone may not be able to provide the oral testimony because we had an overflow, a number of people wanting to provide it. But we do have, you were sent a link with your registration for the hearing. So please do upload all of your written testimony because this will be, all of this, the recording and the testimony will all be delivered to the Board of Trustees' whether or not you are able to deliver orally today or for some of you uploading, everyone should upload the written testimony. For some of you, we may not be able to get to everybody. Well, a number of you are also here in the audience, but of course, we know that the Board of Trustees' hearings, the audience also has a role. Remember the press the president's petition banners from a couple of years ago? And again, did you all bring your signs? Do you have signs? If you have signs, please display them now. And we will also be amplifying our message on social media. So what I will do is shortly turn this over to Rosa Schillikotay to explain how we are doing the social media. Oh, and we also have the Board of Trustees with us, I think. Maybe just in spirit, but we know that they are, in fact, with us, as you will see. Are we all ready? All right. No cuts, no layoffs, no cuts, no layoffs, no return without safe return, no return without safe return, no return without safe return.
Without safe return, no return without safe return.
Stop the war on CUNY. Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter. Now I'll turn it over to Rosa, who will explain the social media part, and then we will begin with our testimony.
Actually, Rosa's having some internet problems. So this is Fran Clark. I'm going to do it for you, but she'll be logged in very soon. So hi, everybody. A few seconds ago, I loaded into the chat a link to a shared Google Doc where you'll see our targets for the day, the governor, the mayor, the chancellor, the chairperson of the CUNY Board of Trustees. You'll see the Twitter handles for those folks. You'll also see some of the hashtags we're using today, which I will post into the chat in just a moment, and a handful of sample tweets. So feel free to work off those tweets or to quote moving testimony that you hear today and share on social. We'll also be sharing this video of this on Facebook after the event. You'll be able to share and push that around. FundCUNYNotCops is one of the hashtags for folks that are posting in the chat right now. So we hope you join in on social to help amplify the impact of this event. We'll also be quoting snippets from some of your testimonies and sharing them on social as well. So please follow us at PSC underscore CUNY and help retweet and amplify those messages.
Thank you, Fran. And Robert, can you tell us what's going on with the Board of Trustees? Are they here?
Yeah, I think that if you scroll through, if you put it into the mode where you're viewing everybody, if you scroll through, you can just see some of the empty chairs and different parts of your screen. I think we're still waiting for them. I'm surprised they're not here, to be perfectly honest. That's why we're recording this.
Great, great, yeah, very unlike them, absolutely. All right, well, let us begin because we do have some serious testimony about all the issues that we've been dealing with. I will read the name, I will read one name at a time, and then that person should unmute yourself and deliver your testimony. Xenia F. Froz. Is Xenia here?
Hi, Xenia, you're unmuted if you're having some issues. Lynn, maybe you want to go to the next person?
Okay. Remy Alapo.
There's Remy. Remy, you're unmuted. And you were, there you go.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm speaking today on behalf of CUNY students and also adjunct faculty in terms of increases in tuition and layoffs. The COVID-19 pandemic will forever shape the way in which CUNY students and faculty think of disparities that affect the educational system in New York. Social inequality is one of the biggest hindrances of any country according to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, also known as the SDGs, because of its contribution to the unfair distribution of resources and its consequent effect on both individuals and groups alike. This is particularly shocking in a developed country such as the United States, where social equality should be considered an absolute human right. The social inequality in higher education is that higher education should be completely free for everyone, and that adjunct faculty at CUNY should be retained to continue their employment services to CUNY. Moreover, adjunct faculty should be paid a higher and comparable living wage so that they can continue their commitment to develop the best in the potential of all CUNY students at the lowest and most affordable cost of higher education. If CUNY depends on the services of its adjunct faculty as a lifeline to keep costs down, why would adjunct faculty be laid off at such an alarming rate? Unfortunately, these are not the times that adjunct faculty at CUNY should be laid off as many of our students are depending on their favorite professors to continue to instruct them in the fall and other semesters, which will be dependent on motivational factors for many students to enroll in future CUNY courses. This can mean a difference in enrollment increases or decreases. As I myself have been non-reappointed, I urge the CUNY Board of Trustees to fix, which has the power to fix the public higher education system in New York City so that adjunct faculty will not continue to be at the bottom of the ladder. Most importantly, I urge the CUNY Board of Trustees to halt immediately the call for a tuition hike so that our students can deserve the best quality and most affordable education in America. Thank you kindly for your attention.
Okay, that's time.
Harry Blaine. Harry Blaine.
Thank you, I just needed to be unmuted. Thanks. Public higher education is essential for a decent and dignified society. It is not a bargaining chip or an item line on a budget. When society and government truly commit to public higher education, they send an unmistakable message. They say, in the elegant simplicity of CUNY's founding phrase, "The whole people are entitled to more than material necessities. The whole people are entitled to more than mere survival. The whole people are worth more than the price that their labor fetches." When society and government truly commit to public higher education, they declare, without reservation, that the whole people deserve intellectual life. They have the right to read, think, reflect, and explore. They have the right to take risks and make mistakes, to pursue youthful fantasies and to remake themselves later in life. They can try, try again, fail again, and fail better. They can inherit their rightful share of a collective social investment. CUNY's first big betrayal of this vision has festered for nearly half a century. The City University thrived as a free university for 129 years. It has declined ever since. The upward trajectory of tuition fees is matched only by the miserable slide of public money. In a cruel and bizarre twist on our founding mission, the growth of precarious academic labor ensures that CUNY now plays no small part in swelling the ranks of New York City poverty. Perhaps the bitterest insult is how this has all happened while governors, mayors, chancellors, and college presidents have cheerfully continued talking about social mobility, diversity, and opportunity. If only I could express the scorn and anger on my students' faces when these words come up. If only those aloof custodians of austerity, the Board of Trustees, could see the depths of contempt in which they are held. The plague of coronavirus has taught us many depressing things, but one happier lesson ought not to be forgotten. We can make social investments when we want to. Ours is not a crisis of means, but a crisis of will and conviction. Diligently then, and with utmost humanity, we say to all the crisis mongers, crisis makers, and crisis predators, we are coming for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And in the chat, we were reminded that everyone should sort of repeat their name and I guess what campus you are from as well. So Mary Boland. Is Mary Boland here? Okay. Stuart Chen Hayes.
Lynn?
Yes.
I posted the names of the people who signed up who are here. I chatted you them.
Okay. Yeah, the chat goes by. Oh, I see, you did that, okay. Can your... Yeah, I'm not sure that I can see every single name, so I don't have that. So we have the Board of Trustees here then. Diane Auslander.
Well, it's very much like a regular Board of Trustees meeting.
Diane is here, she's here. She just has to be unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
All right, good. Diane Auslander, adjunct assistant professor at Lehman in History Department. I am writing to implore you not to continue to tear down CUNY as an effective institution essential to the growth and progress of the people of New York by withholding the funds needed for us to function. I'm asking you to show courage and good sense by retaining all the wonderful faculty and staff of themselves to keep CUNY going despite continuous cuts that have been inflicted upon us over the years. This is the same faculty and staff who have gone above and beyond to help students and each other during this highly disruptive, stressful, and unprecedented semester. Our reward cannot be to lose our jobs. The most vulnerable jobs are, of course, the adjuncts, teaching and non-teaching, as well as CLTs, and others who are already underpaid and have little job security. As an adjunct, I have spent many hours in creative thinking, helping and encouraging students who have issues with lack of resources for online learning as well as conditions such as depression and their own illnesses of those family members that have been exacerbated during this period. I myself am fortunate in having had a lot of experience teaching online, but so many of my colleagues have not had such experience and have had to spend hours every day learning to put together their classes online and to give their students as close to the classroom experience they expected as possible. Adjuncts will never get paid for such extra hours, nor will full-timers who had had to stretch the meaning of full-time well beyond its limits. They deserve at least to remain employed. But retaining faculty and staff for their own sake or because they deserve it is not the main or only issue. The most telling point is that the institution will not survive as a viable engine for the growth and prosperity of New York without these talented, experienced, and dedicated people. CUNY has already been pared down to the bone. It can't take anymore. You have alternatives to laying off staff. What about all those administrators and their salaries? According to most economists, times like these call for more investment, not more austerity. And history has borne out the wisdom of that. Can you not learn from history and apply that wisdom to ensure the survival and success of this vital institution? Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Daniel's...
Quickly, Lynn, I'm sorry. Members, you'll be able to unmute yourself. I just ask when people are speaking or testifying that you remain muted and just be mindful of any background noise. Thank you.
Thank you. So Diane Swanson, and then on deck is Michael Paris.
That's Daniel Swanson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just... Diane just spoke with us.
I'm mistaken.
Thank you.
Daniel, yeah, I've been called worse. Yeah, my testimony is that I believe there's no reason for other cities to accomplish more and other universities to accomplish more than what CUNY can accomplish. I work at both NJIT and CUNY as an adjunct faculty, and although I have been given a contract to continue at both of those positions in the fall, that still means nothing to me. And it won't mean anything until I have a guarantee that we will be having some form of classes resuming in the fall. And to me, and my wife, and my unborn child, that is actually very important information. And if we don't get that, we will be leaving. I will be quitting. And I don't want to quit because I love my job and I love CUNY, but I will have no choice. So I'm saying to you, the board, you need to use common sense, you need to use logic, and you need to use what's called caring. I know it's a hard concept to understand under the current government that we're in, but you need to show some sympathy, some empathy. And you need to understand that you're not only going to be helping hundreds of very talented adjunct faculty, but you'll be helping the students that they so much care for. And as was stated earlier, people have tried very hard to complete the spring semester during this pandemic. And from what I've read, we actually did a pretty good job, us faculty. So why would you not want to keep those people that were able to endure such a hard pandemic? That makes no sense. That's all.
Thank you, Daniel. Michael Paris, and I hope the Board of Trustees are listening.
Hi, thank you. I'll be brief. I am the chair of the Department of Political Science and Global Affairs at the College of Staten Island. I'm an associate professor. I've been teaching in CUNY campuses since 2001. This is simply unconscionable and unacceptable what CUNY is doing and the way CUNY is speaking and positioning itself in relation to the government in Albany, in relation to Washington, DC. The Board of Trustees have a moral and legal obligation to advocate for us. The plan seems to be to destroy the university in some ridiculous effort to save it. At CSI, we've been told we need to save $10 million on an overall budget of $110 million. This against the backdrop of flat funding and cuts over five years. And 70% of that targeted hit is going through layoffs on the most vulnerable, the most poorly paid workers, employees. And what is it going to mean for our students? It's going to mean fewer course offerings. It's going to mean greatly increased class sizes. It's going to mean that those who get the worst, those who don't get the resources and opportunities they need as a matter of course, are going to fare even worse. So you need to fight. You need to stop this. I'm heartened. On my campus, we have a revolt brewing. We have subcommittees of the union. We have many, many more people than we've ever had. So there may just be a withdrawal of support for the institution in the fall if you don't change your tune and stop being complicit and complacent. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So next, we have Jen Gabory, and then on deck is Marcella Bensevany.
Hi, my name is Jen Gwory. I teach at Hunter College. I'm currently the chapter chair. I teach in the Department of Women and Gender Studies, and I serve as a full-time lecturer on an adjunct conversion line. Earlier this year, in the fall before the pandemic, I sent in a room reservation form for a space at Roosevelt House at Hunter College in order to ask for a room where we would schedule a meeting or a public event to invite a key legislator, who is going to talk to us, was the plan, about legislation that was going to raise revenue for CUNY. I put in that form. I didn't hear anything back after about three weeks. That was no surprise. But when I followed up, I found out that because of the nature of the event, I was waiting for approval from Campus Government Affairs, but that approval never came. And later, when I was poking around the college to find out why not, I got told that the administration of the college would feel uncomfortable hosting an event with a legislature to talk about raising revenue or legislation to raise revenue because it might conflict with CUNY's own plan, which is different to raise revenue. I serve on the Legislative Committee of the PSC CUNY, and I would have to spend a lot less time on these kinds of tasks and being concerned with raising revenue if you would do your job. You not even, frequently, the Board of Trustees is not only not advocating for more revenue, but you fail us in the most basic ways. Every year, your budget request does not ask for what we need. You fail us in that way. You don't get us what we need. And moreover, you are complacent with an agenda that is not CUNY and not good for CUNY, but is something that the governor seems to want. And that is a form of corruption. We are asking you to do your job.
10 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And I just had a question in the chat. Is, do we have any indication about whether or not board members are listening? Can we take a look at the board and maybe see if they are listening?
They're still not here? Yeah, if you put it in gallery view too, you can look through and see. We've got cameras in different locations. You know, we're really hoping that they show up. They reopened CUNY Central, the offices, this week, actually. So they could be there socially distanced, listening to us if they wanted to. But they haven't showed up yet.
Absolutely, and that's why we need to make sure that they are going to listen. So thank you again, and Marcella Bensevany.
Correct. Hi, everybody. Marcella Bensevany, I'm a professor of history at Foster School of Community College. I would like to open my brief remarks with a powerful quote by Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor. She wrote, "Until we get equality in education, we won't have an equal society." Education inequality is at the root of the profound and deepening social crisis that is in pool and open display today more than ever. From healthcare disparities to systematic racism and police brutality. Sixty-six years after the Supreme Court landmark decision to end the racial segregation in schools, the United States has yet to fulfill her promise of equal educational opportunity for all. As you all well know, CUNY began as a noble experiment to make academic excellence accessible to all New Yorkers. But let's be honest, we are never going to achieve this goal without adequate funding. Students, faculty, the union, public intellectuals, and progressive politicians have repeatedly called attention to the growing disinvestment in CUNY and public education in general. CUNY and SUNY are already struggling to meet the needs of their students. Without funding to support the growing demand of academic programs and desperately needed the social and economic services, more students are likely to fall off the college pathways. More than 2,100 CUNY faculty of all disciplines, ranks, and colleges assigned a letter sent to Governor Cuomo, calling on him to reverse the course and fund the CUNY. Like others, I signed this letter because I love CUNY and all it represents. And I believe that funding CUNY is a top priority. Investing in CUNY is a matter of racial justice and economic justice. Now more than ever, it is time to address the ongoing inequality that affects our students and their community values.
That's time.
Struggles that have been made more severe by the ongoing pandemic. I'm here to ask you, as I asked the Governor Cuomo, to change course and commit to funding the public higher education, our students, our city, and our state truly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcella. Herbert Fisher, and then on deck is Yuna Hong.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Professor Herbert Fisher, and although I didn't prepare anything formal, I will say that despite New York CARES Act funding, we have had massive and indiscriminate cuts in our staff, especially our history and political science staff. During this COVID crisis, we couldn't have a worse nexus of executive leadership from Cuomo in Albany to President Trump at the federal level. You couldn't have two worst chief executives in terms of potential funding of CUNY. CUNY has long been the symbolic living embodiment of the American dream throughout the country. And our students, mostly first-generation Americans, people of color, Latina and Latino, reflexively and intrinsically know this. And they felt this impending disappointment ever since we went online, although we prepared lovingly and dutifully online lessons as professors. We're going to face the ironic specter in fall of awarding certain professors, distinguished professor of the year. I'm one of them. And there's going to be a press conference. If there isn't a press conference, I'll try to make sure there is one. And they're going to be rewarding people who have largely been cut. And so that's one of the ironies and poor planning. So we imagine that the cuts stemmed from two things. One was initially students exhibited low enrollment. And I think most importantly, they were worried that Cuomo is going to act like Governor Andrew Cuomo and try to do something bad to CUNY, and that is not have any faith in public education and make indiscriminate cuts. So that's where I am here because of indiscriminate cuts in our school and the impending specter of possibly a closure of CUNY, which hopefully that doesn't happen.
That's right. Thank you very much. And everybody... And everybody, also just to draw your attention, everyone who's here to the chat, Fran is putting in sample tweets that you can all tweet out so that we can get this message out there broadly. And the recording will also be sent out as well on Facebook, but also to the Board of Trustees. And thank you for all of this really important, powerful testimony. So the next person is Yuna Hong. And then Zian Zhao will be afterwards.
Hello, I'm here. Dear good Board of Trustee, I'm Yuna Hong, Adjong Assistant Professor in Media Culture, College of Staten Island. I taught scene 111 video one class in spring 2020 semester. This is my second semester at the CUNY system. And I work really hard to be a good teacher and love what I do. I also respect my students who study and work hard to support their family. Adjong faculties are underpaid labor with no job security, but most of us work hard to hold on to our position. I also want to mention to you that I personally need my Adjong position to support my family. My husband has a Parkinson's disease, and my daughter is a freshman in the college. Everything help us now. I urge you to reconsider CUNY budget cut and no layoff of adjunct faculty or other part-time workers so we can continue to teach the student who are deserved to be the best and be part of the greater CUNY system. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. So next we have Zian Zhao. And then after that, Barbara Bowen. Is GN here? Barbara's on the, is Barbara here? I saw her in the participants. Okay. All right, so we'll come back.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Yeah, this is Jen Xiao, engine faculty from Queens College Accounting Department. I actually joined CUNY since year 2011. From Baruch College, jumped to Queens College. I'm currently teaching lump of public governmental accounting. I actually connected my student with the controller department. And so they could have hands-on experience. And then the testimony for student, fantastic. They learn a lot from how the government work and how they should deliver their responsibility. And right now, because the budget cut, right? Can you imagine if the cost cannot be provided to student? Then it's a big loss for them. And they also miss opportunity to enhance the career. So I urge the trustee to really reconsider and, you know, think about strategic planning more effectively and continue to support the engine faculty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Barbara here? Or not yet? Okay, so we're going to continue with the testimonies. Just to again remind, I think Fran has dropped it, both tweets as well as an action letter. Please do sign that. Also, because, you know, we are here in, you know, in the Board of Trustees people's hearing. And we always have, can maybe everyone put up their signs again? Yeah? All right. Thank you. Let's, you know, folks in gallery view, you can go look through all of them, right? So next person, next couple of people testifying then Susan DeRamo and John Highland.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Am I off mute? Yes? Yes, okay. Hi, I'm Susan DeRamo. I'm an adjunct lecturer at City College and Lehman College. And I got my, I'm also a registered nurse. I got my degree for free at City College and a nurse practitioner at Lehman College. But I want to say, what are they thinking? But really, they're not thinking. Because how could they cut any city or state aid to a premier university? The City University of New York. The university teaches 25, 250,000 undergraduates a year. Many educated citizens and politicians hail from CUNY. The governor and legislators must tax the wealthy. What can be the hesitation? Do they not believe in justice? It's not just to let people accumulate such wealth while others are trying to go to college to get a job and help society and are stopped from pursuing their dreams because they cannot pay to go to college. CUNY must be free again. It's not just to lay off adjunct lecturers who are the backbone of CUNY, who number 12,000. The New York wealthy run their companies with the labor force that went to CUNY. The tax system in the US and New York is unfair. We are calling on all to fix this system. I tell my students all the time, we work hard to endorse candidates and help them get elected. They get elected and then they betray us. Do not betray us, Cuomo and legislators. Go back, find the taxes that you can get for us to fund CUNY. Do not starve CUNY. Our students deserve the best. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. John Highland.
Hi, I'm John Highland, a retired sociology professor from LaGuardia Community College. Given the empty seats, I prefer to speak to my colleagues and sisters and brothers from the union. And I congratulate the organizers of this meeting for stimulating thinking about the Board of Trustees, its composition and its functioning. I hope this is not a one-time event, but an ongoing practice to demonstrate what an effective participatory Board of Trustees would be like. A people's Board of Trustees would be making the case for free, fully publicly funded and staffed CUNY rather than managing austerity by protecting the wealth of the millionaires and billionaires. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And thank you for reminding us that the People's University would also be well-served with the People's Board of Trustees. So the next two speakers will be first Amitai Tuval and then Eileen Moran. And again, the reminder to introduce yourselves, which I haven't, I've been neglectful to remind you all to do. But just your name as well as what campus or.
Yes, hi. This is Amitai Tuval, and I teach marketing at Baruch College since 2011. And I'm starting my three-year appointment now in 2020. And also taught anthropology for one semester at BMCC. And I really feel that it's very unethical for CUNY to give a raise to adjuncts. And then suddenly, when there is a supposed budget crisis, although that's debatable because there's money coming from Congress, et cetera, they decide to financially bully us and decide to remove us from CUNY first. And in fact, a lot of us are, you know, like we have Herb Fisher and other people are, you know, recognized, distinguished in many ways. And we attract students. So by removing us from CUNY first, yes, there'll be less student enrollment because some of us actually attract students to the system. So that's all I wanted to say. And I really appreciate this event and I hope Board of Trustees listens to us.
Thank you, Amitai. Our next speaker is Eileen. But you did say you really hope the Board of Trustees listens to us. Can we get a sense of whether the Board of Trustees is listening at this point?
I still don't see them, to be perfectly honest. Yeah, no, they're not here. You know, it's what, an hour in? I mean, come on, this is ridiculous.
This is so unusual because generally in the hearings, they are usually there attentively.
Very attentive.
Very attentive, yeah. All right, something must be happening. But again, we are, you know, this is why we are delivering our testimony and we are amplifying in social media and amplifying it with our, you know, with our in-person socially-distanced rallies and events. And we'll continue to do this throughout the summer. So onward to Eileen Moran. You're on mute.
You're on mute, Eileen.
We can't hear you, Eileen. Okay, now, okay. I'm someone who graduated from Hunter in 1969, and my education was essentially free. I pursued a master's degree at Brooklyn College and completed my PhD in sociology at the Graduate Center. None of that as a working-class person would have been possible except for CUNY. And now, I guess, I'm concerned that what I see from the Board of Trustees is their willingness to continue to impose austerity on our students, even though this is a crisis, both in terms of health and the economy. And they are still, not as far as I can tell, listening. So my sense is, if the Board of Trustees doesn't have the courage to fight for CUNY, they should all resign. And then we should have a people's Board of Trustees that would actually do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And this one person wrote Board of Puppets. All right. The next two speakers will be Lorraine Cohen and Marcia Newfield.
Hi. I'm, can you hear me? Yeah. I'm Lorraine Cohen. I have spent, like Eileen, much of my life in CUNY. I got my doctorate from the Graduate Center in Sociology. And I've worked at LaGuardia Community College for the last 25 years. Presently, having served office as chapter chair, I'm vice president of community colleges. In a time when the millions in this country, many for the first time, are acknowledging the history of systemic racism in American society, it is unthinkable that the governor and the mayor are signaling that they are going to resolve their budget problems by making draconian cuts to CUNY's budgets, thus requiring layoffs of potentially thousands of part-time and contingent workers. Systemic racism does not only mean that policing in the society needs fundamental redefinition and reorganization. Systemic racism also means that those in power and those of us who have white privilege recognize that the basic cultural material needs of color have been ignored, neglected, and denied. CUNY is not only an economic engine, as Cuomo acknowledges, but it is also an engine of hope for thousands of low-income and working-class students of color. For thousands of students, CUNY represents the only opportunity to develop their individual intellectual and creative potential as human beings and to obtain the preparation they need to enter a highly competitive job market. What will happen to CUNY students when thousands of adjuncts are laid off? How many CUNY students will survive in very large classes where instructors won't have the time to give them individual intention and encouragement? What will happen to our students when there are fewer counselors, fewer course offerings, fewer librarians and tutors? Would Cuomo be willing to send his children or grandchildren to a college that has been ravaged by the budget cuts that he is imposing on CUNY? There are alternatives to budget cuts and layoffs. He is operating out of a set of assumptions that business, being friendly to business, keeping taxes low is more important than providing for the educational and social needs of our students. We must fight back. No tuition raises, no cuts, no layoffs, and no compromising of our health.
Thank you, Lorraine. Which is a good, let's do a little chanting. I know you all muted, but no cuts, no layoffs, no cuts, no layoffs, no cuts.
No cuts, no layoffs. No cuts, no layoffs. No cuts, no layoffs. No layoffs, no cuts. No layoffs, no cuts. No layoffs, no cuts.
Thank you. Those universities.
No cuts, no layoffs. 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 No cuts, no layoffs.
The Cuomo Board is a little impatient.
Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. So next.
I can't breathe.
Right, I can't breathe.
I cannot breathe.
I can't breathe. We can't breathe.
I can't breathe. I can't breathe. We can't breathe.
Okay. We have a few more who will testify. Marcia Newfield?
Okay, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, I have a very short thought, which is, how many times in a person's life do you have the opportunity to really affect someone else? In other words, do you decide who to marry? You decide whether you're going to buy, move to another town or another country, or you have a child or not a child. Well, so this is a great, the decision that each trustee has right now is whether to go along to get along or to take a stand. What, your job doesn't pay you anyway, right? So why not take a stand? Take a stand for supporting CUNY. What, it's a moral, it's an opportunity. It's a great moral opportunity. Take it. That's it.
Thanks, Marcia.
Thank you, Marcia.
Happy birthday, Marcia.
Oh, thank you. All right. So we have Blanca Vasquez and then Zinnia Afros.
Okay. I should be quick. Blanca Vasquez, you can hear me, right? Yes, CCNY graduate. I'm also a graduate of Richmond College, where I got a master's. I was at the Center for Puerto Rican Studies as a EEO for 15 years. I've been a Film and Media Studies adjunct associate professor for 16 years. So I've spent most of my life at CUNY. I want to make just one point to the trustees and to the chancellor, Felix Matos Rodriguez. On a segment of 60 Minutes in mid-June, John King, the president and CEO of the Education Trust, a nonprofit working for underserved students, said, quote, "I think a lot about CUNY, partly because it's such a powerful engine of social mobility today and has been for generations of low-income folks, generations of immigrants who through CUNY have gotten access to the American dream." In the New York Times, "The backward logic austerity threatens America's most vibrant campus." Another headline, right? In The New Yorker, "The pandemic is the time to resurrect the public university." Inside Higher Ed has chronicled, "The CUNY has suffered more coronavirus deaths than any other higher education system in the US." You hear that, trustees? A trustee is a guardian, right? CUNY is a public trust with a commitment to working-class and middle-class students. The chancellor is the public face of CUNY and in a better position than past chancellors to argue for CUNY's importance as a past president of both the community and senior college. Some of the trustees, and you know me, have histories in communities of color. My question, what is the Board of Trustees and chancellor doing to publicly advocate for CUNY as a vital resource in the city's economic recovery? PSC members have written floods of editorials. The PSC and its chapters have mobilized. Students have mobilized. We're working with state and local legislators to save CUNY. We don't see you. We don't hear you. Even in support of the urgently and powerfully written public statements that union members are making in defense of CUNY, students, legislators, and the PSC were calling on you to save CUNY. We get broad public support, right? Because thousands of New York families send their kids to CUNY, work at CUNY, or graduated from CUNY. Even the police officers that arrested us when we did civil disobedience said they're graduates of CUNY. So are you public advocates, right? Our students are majority people of color. Cuts affect them. Layoffs will likely disproportionately impact Black and Latino employees at CUNY. The community's hardest hit by COVID. Can you imagine losing healthcare in a pandemic that is far from over? I urge you to act now before the damage is done to people's lives. I'm asking, and students are asking, and the union is asking, the trustees and the chancellor's office to step up in a crisis. If not now, when? And if you cannot step up, you should not. And if you cannot step up, you should not be a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, Blanca. So Xenia Afros. If you can't stand up, step down.
That's a tweet.
That's a tweet, that's right. Is Xenia here? You know, Xenia was here.
Xenia, I'm not sure, I don't see a video for you, but you are unmuted if you want to start talking. You should probably go to the next person.
Okay. Well, we have Andrea Vasquez is calling in as phone number 917-576-6987.
Okay.
Andrea, are you there?
Yes, she's on.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, are you waiting for me to speak?
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful. I'm sorry, my internet went down. That never happens, but my internet went down and I was so excited to be at this hearing. One, to see all of the colleagues, my colleagues and students and friends who ordinarily attend these hearings. And two, to have my chance to speak at the Board of Trustees. Now, I'm not on video, so I can't see their faces, but I'm sure they're sitting there listening intently to everything that, that our speakers are saying. And I guess, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear everybody, but I'll certainly listen later. And we will submit testimony because as the trustees and the chancellor know, we are not sitting idly by at this moment. And we are outraged that you're not taking a strong stand in defense of CUNY. In fact, I feel that you are letting, we feel that you're letting CUNY fall apart, that you're allowing for a complete deterioration of the university at this moment, and it does not bode well for the future. I'm a CUNY grad. I've worked at CUNY for 30 years. My parents went to CUNY and two of my children went to CUNY. And I don't want to see CUNY die. And I don't want to see CUNY not fulfill its historic mission. And it would be a shame and we're not going to let that happen. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Andrea. And yes, we can assure you that in fact, the Board of Trustees are listening intently and they will. And we, you know, we will make sure that they do listen intently. So with, with this, thank you, so they, there they are, are virtually listening intent as always. But this is why we will be creating the People's Board of Trustees for the People's University and we will be continuing our, our campaign, our CUNY Summer of Struggle to make sure that our voices are heard and that we, we are not going to see the dismantling of, of, of CUNY as an institution, of, of the continued layoffs and of cuts and layoffs and of a return that is not a safe return. I'm going to pass it on to, yeah, I believe that everybody that is here who had signed up to testify actually has testified. Maybe just write in the chat if that is not the case. Okay, all right, great. So I'm going to pass it on to, to, to PSC president Barbara Bowen, who will close us off with a call to action for the summer.
Great, fantastic. Thank you all. The, the testimony was really terrific. And you know, it's so angering in so many ways to hear once again the incredible eloquence of the CUNY faculty, staff, and students and hear that it's falling on deaf ears. So Andrea, even though you can't see, let's just imagine that the trustees aren't there because they ran out into the streets. They were so empowered and so enraged and so moved by this brilliant testimony that they as one got up out of their chairs, ran into the streets. They're running up to Albany right now. They're shaking Governor Cuomo, turning him upside down and saying, "You must make your priorities to support the people of New York, not to protect the wealth of the rich," because that's what this is about. So we can maybe imagine that and ask the trustees, when we hold the next people's hearing, just how successful they were in that effort. But as somebody who has been to many, many Board of Trustees hearings, I, I want to say that you're, the power of what you have said is something that each one of them should hear and take to heart. Thank you so much, Lynn and Robert and Pam, Fran, others, Rosa, who worked to put this event together. We should do it again. But what I want to say to all of you is that this is one of our many events in this Summer of Struggle, building the fight in the union to be the voice that defends CUNY. If those trustees are not listening and they're not standing up for CUNY and they're not defending the People's University against racist disinvestment in this moment of global reckoning about systemic racism that I hope is finally coming. If they're not doing that, then we will. We're not going to wait for the trustees to lead in this crisis because they have failed to lead so far. And they're also failing even to defend. They shouldn't be merely defending the university. They should be expanding the university. And in this crisis in the city, if we didn't have a city university, a public university, that would be one of the demands of protesters, to have a public university. And we have that university and it's 80% people of color. And now what's happening to it? Just at this moment, when the community's hardest hit by COVID, when the community's hardest hit by job loss, the community's hardest hit by racism, need their university the most, what are our trustees doing? Dismantling it. And make no mistake, that discontinuing adjunct appointments is a layoff. When adjuncts teach 60% of the courses at CUNY, when some adjuncts have been here 10, 20 years, you don't just end an adjunct's appointment and say, oh, well, they only had a one semester appointment. That is a layoff. CUNY's got to stand up and acknowledge what they are doing. They are exploiting the already exploitative labor system that makes people vulnerable and using that vulnerability to dismantle the university, to harm our students. This is about harming people. It's about harming people who will lose their health insurance. CUNY is willing to have adjunct instructors and staff lose their health insurance during a pandemic. What kind of message is that? And they're willing to let students have a university where there may be hundreds or thousands fewer courses for students to take because their instructors are not there just at the moment they're needed most. So that's the approach they are taking in this moment. They are taking the approach of allowing and not only allowing, but opening the door for the university to be further cut. In every fiscal crisis, we see the crisis being used as an excuse to cut an institution like CUNY that serves primarily the poor, the working class, and people of color. That's what happened in the fiscal crisis when CUNY was cut disproportionately to its size of the budget. And now we're seeing again massive cuts to CUNY. So not only is it harming students, employees, the city, the global, the global issue of racism and investment, but it's also sending the message by CUNY's just opening the door to cuts and layoffs. They are sending the dangerous message that cutting CUNY is inevitable and acceptable, that cuts are okay and that layoffs need to be normalized. Well, we in the PSC refuse to normalize layoffs. We may not win every single battle, but we will not normalize dismantling of the university. So this summer, what we are doing together is building, building, building our power. I heard Michael Paris say earlier on that we may not find people as willing to be so supportive in the fall if this university keeps undermining us. We need to build on that strength, one-on-one, each with the other. So I hope I can count on you to come to the next hearing that we hold. And I, maybe the trustees will show up then, and I hope they will. And we want to count on you. We have a next big event in July, July 18th. Needs to be double the event we just had. And above all, I want to ask if any of you will sign on, and you can always let our organizers know, sign on to do one-on-one conversations, member to member, one by one, to build the kind of trust and confidence and knowledge about each other we will need if we're going to continue to take on this fight. And it's a fight worth doing. I mean, I really feel that we are lucky in this moment to have an organization and to have a way of fighting one of the important fights. Not everybody has that way. So let's use our organization the best we can, rise to this moment. And that means every single one of us doing exactly what the trustees are not doing, counting on each other, fighting, defending, and going beyond defense, but to expand what CUNY could be in this moment. So thank you all so much for your moving and powerful testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, and Fran has put in the chat for each of the various calls to action that Barbara, that Barbara was referring to, including tomorrow's student-led march to save lives, save, save jobs, save CUNY. The July 18th caravans in, in CUNY communities, the one-on-one conversations as we build for stronger action at the end of the summer. We will also be doing, in some form or another, most weeks, weekly actions such as this one, virtual or in person, and lots of other ways to get involved in your chapters and, and throughout the, and, and within the, the, the union overall. So thank you, everybody, for being here. Maybe we could just do one last send-off to raise our voices loud so that the Board of Trustees hears us where they are, wherever they are. And we will be continuing to bring our message strongly to the board, to, to Cuomo, to the city, to the state, to wherever it needs to go. So let's do, no cuts, no layoffs.
Cuts, no layoffs. No layoffs. No cuts, no layoffs. No cuts, no layoffs. No cuts, no layoffs. No justice, no peace. No returns, no returns. No justice, no peace. No returns, no returns. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No losses, no peace. No justice, no education.
Thank you all and see you at the next.
Absolutely. Appreciate you.
Have a good weekend.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.